Bill, are you ready? Okay, good. Bill, everything okay over there? Bill? You're good? Okay. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virginia City Council Chambers. This is a regularly scheduled city council meeting. We'll call this meeting to order. Today's date is Tuesday, October 12, 2021. The time is 5:30 PM. Pam, would you please take the roll call?
Bearboo.
President.
Freely.
Here.
Paulson.
President.
Biondich.
President.
Johnson.
Here.
Barneselli.
Here.
Coffey.
President. Would everyone please stand and join me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you. Item 3A on the agenda, which is the public hearing. We're going to recess the city council meeting to establish this public hearing, which is being held tonight, October 12, 2021, regarding tax increment financing for District 6. And so we have a packet of information here for anybody who wants to take a look at it. It's rather extensive. And so item 3A is going to be, once we discuss it, is the adopt the resolution approving the establishment of municipal development district number six and TIF, which is tax increment financing district number 6.1 within the municipal development district number six, and adoption of a development program and tax increment financing related to 3B, adopt the resolution authorizing the interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with a tax increment financing district number six. I think I would ask if Tammy Umdal would come before the... I'm... I'm sorry. Tammy, I apologize. Welcome. Please turn the mic on and please introduce yourself where you're from and give us and the audience a brief synopsis of the public hearing related to this tax increment financing project.
Mayor, councilors, Tammy Umdal from Northland Securities, serving as advisor to the city on the review of this proposed tax increment financing district. I have been working with staff for the last several months as part of the project review, as well as discussions with the developer. Included in your very thick agenda packet for this item was a memo from me. I'm going to keep my comments brief and focused on what was included in this memorandum provided to the city. Mayor, as you introduced, this item, this public hearing, relates to the city's consideration of the establishment of a tax increment financing district number 6-1, a redevelopment district. The council, prior to this meeting date earlier this year, did adopt a resolution with respect to making the findings that allow you to consider the establishment of this district this evening as a redevelopment district. The proposed project within the boundaries of the proposed district, as the council is aware and has been reviewing, is a mixed-use project with hotel units and extended stay units. The actual number of the units may vary somewhat from what was included in the memo, but certainly a very important project to the city of approximately 70 hotel units and 61 extended stay units and parking provided. The developer submitted an application to the city requesting $4,400,000 of tax increment payable over 26 years on a pay-go basis, meaning this is not upfront money that he is requesting or the developer is requesting. It would be payable solely from tax increment. In a moment, I'm going to get into the specifics of what Northland and staff is proposing to the city council, which is different than what the developer requested. With respect to the type of TIF district, as noted, this would be a redevelopment district. State law does allow the city to consider a duration of that type of district for 26 years. As proposed and within the draft tax increment financing plan that was presented to the city council, I would also note that that plan was provided to the county and to the school district at least 30 days before the hearing tonight, as well as the county commissioner also received notice of this hearing. I did not receive any comments from the county or the school district related to the proposed actions by the city council. But I note that the TIF plan actually maintains a duration of not to exceed 15 years versus the maximum 26 years allowed. With respect to conclusion and terms for assistance, and for those that may be following along, I'm on page two of the memo, I'm going to go through these points. I would also note that Northland, myself, reviewed the developer's application pro forma in detail and found those estimates and assumptions to be within general industry standards and no concerns noted. So with respect to the TIF district, the first year of estimated tax increment collection is 2024. So if the city council were to establish the project and if it were to be constructed next year, the first year of taxes that would be generated from the new building is 2024. The duration, as noted, would be 15 years, which means the end of the district would go away in December of 2038. The total estimated tax increment to be collected over those 15 years is $6.6 million, or in today's dollars, approximately $4.6 million value of that cash flow stream over those 15 years. As proposed in the plan, if the council were to adopt, 100% of the increase in valuation would be captured in order to provide assistance to this project and its feasibility. Under terms of an agreement that are not before the city council tonight, but as proposed, and that agreement will come before the city council at a later date, the city would pay 95% of the increase in local taxes, the tax increment, to the developer on a note of a present value of $4.4 million. The difference between what will be presented in that agreement and what the developer requested is in the duration. The duration under what is before you tonight would be limited to 15 years versus the full 26 years. Based upon the estimated valuation, preliminary valuation, because until the project's built and the assessor determines that valuation, it is estimated that the increment that would be generated would be sufficient to repay, reimburse the developer for those $4.4 million in site improvement costs over that 15 years. The developer was seeking a longer term in the event that that period was not sufficient in order for them to capture more increment. That is not what is being proposed before you this evening and what is in that plan that was presented. The city will retain 5% of the tax increment to reimburse itself for administrative costs. It also provides the opportunity that if the increment is greater than what is projected at this time and the developer is paid back sooner, rather than the full 15 years, that the city would be able to continue to capture increment to repay itself for the value of the land that is proposed to be conveyed to the project for the dollar. That's why later on your agenda, there is a resolution for an interfund loan that includes both the value of the land and the administrative costs. Presently, if all these assumptions held true, and we don't know, in TIF districts, they're long-term, you don't know what will happen to tax rates, valuation, et cetera. But let's just say, for sake of discussion, all those assumptions held true, there would not be sufficient increment for the city to reimburse itself for the land. The reason we've presented the plan as such in that resolution is to provide that opportunity that if projections turn out to be different than what we're assuming presently. The last point with respect to a minimum assessment agreement, that is not something that is before you this evening. The TIF projections were based upon a value, taxable market value of $11,670,000. It is to be determined before the final agreement comes before you with the developer whether or not that will include a minimum assessment agreement. It is Northland's opinion that that minimum assessment agreement is not necessary for the city to protect its interests because you are not providing any funds upfront. This is entirely pay-go, and you will make payments only to the extent that there's tax increment available to do so, and you would pay 95% of whatever is actually generated, not based upon what is projected today. So if the city council, and I've come to the end of my points here, adopts the resolution to establish the TIF district, you are making the finding that but for this assistance, that this project as proposed would not be developed on this site. Doesn't mean that nothing would ever get developed there or some other project, but this project as proposed. So that is the decision of the city council, and that language is included in that resolution establishing the TIF district. Mayor, council, that's... Those are the end of my comments. Happy to answer any questions that you may have.
Thank you. If you just stay for one moment, I wanted to ask our city clerk, did you receive any written comments or concerns with respect to this public hearing this evening?
No, I have not, mayor.
Any emails or any other correspondence, or any social media correspondence, or phone calls related to this?
No, I have not.
Okay, thank you. I have one question. As we move forward, the length of 15 years, so that's what's before us today. In the event that we are provided additional information regarding this project, whether it's expanding of the project or whether there's a gap funding component that we need to take a look at, can that be adjusted from the 15-year period higher?
Mayor, councilors, yes, it can, under certain circumstances. The city would have to go through the same process with respect to notice to the county, the school, following the proper period of notification before approving a modification. And you would have to approve that modification to reimburse costs that had not been incurred yet. So it can't be that costs are incurred and then you determine to extend the duration. It would have to be for unforeseen other costs or further development within those boundaries.
Further development within the boundaries.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Counselor Bearboo.
I got a question for you. I hate TIFs, but in this circumstance, I'll look at it more generously. If we set a minimum assessment value on the homes at the present time, we make the TIFs, so people's... It's been notorious here that the valuations and stuff in the tax base has been going up in our neighborhoods. We set a minimum assessment at this date, what it is incurred on the date that it takes effect, if those values go below, is that a circumstance to extend?
Mayor, councillor, if I may.
Yes.
So you cannot, if I understood the question correctly, you could, for this project, under terms of an agreement with the future property owner at the development, enter into what's called a minimum assessment agreement that establishes a floor, not a ceiling, meaning if the assessor comes in and determines that after the hotel is built, that the value is greater than $11.6 million, which is the estimate at this time, that higher value would be set as the taxable market value. If you entered that agreement, the assessor and the assessor has to sign off on that agreement as well, that the valuation couldn't fall below the $11.6 million during the terms of that minimum assessment agreement. Counsel, I believe you also asked me about adjacent property.
Yeah. It's the same question I'm asking with adjacent property, because we lose on that end first. From the city aspect, if my value goes from, say, $150,000 to $175,000, my taxes go up significantly. But if we set a minimum assessment on the house at the time they get, then we capture a portion of that TIF. Am I wrong or am I correct?
You are not correct in that, councillor, that the city council could not establish a... In a way, you're saying minimum, but you mean as high as a valuation could go, that the council does not have that authority, nor is that subject to what is before the council this evening as far as your action.
I still have an answer to my question.
So if I understood the question you're asking, could the city establish a minimum assessed value, taxable value of residential property?
For the TIF. I don't care about the value, but a minimum for the TIF on those properties.
And the answer is no to that.
Can't do that?
You cannot do that.
It's an awful big area to be pulling money out of residences around the area, because I've been involved with about six different districts over my time as a councillor. We got rid of that and went with abatement, but my understanding is with this project, it's too complicated to use abatement, so I guess I'm going to have to go along with your recommendation here on that. I don't like it at all, but we need this project in town, so... All right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, thank you, Tammy. We'll have some more questions from the council, and then we'll go to the general audience if they have any questions. Counselor Paulson.
Thank you, mayor. To take on to Counselor Bearboo's question, so could you kind of explain how this possibly would affect the residential side by creating this district?
Mayor, councillor, in the near term, it would not have an effect if you pass that resolution and make the but-for findings, because the council then is saying, by passing that resolution, but for this assistance, this project would not get built. So therefore, you're not diverting taxes because you're... If you pass the resolution, in your opinion, you're saying, but for this assistance, there would not be any increase in taxable market value. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Counselor Paulson. Any other questions for the council at this time? Tammy, if I may, if there's anybody in the audience that has a question or concern with respect to the presentation you made today and the TIF increment for District 6 that were considered today by a resolution, does anybody in the audience have a question or comment that we or Tammy can answer for you at this time? Okay, seeing none, Counselor Biondich.
Thank you. The people that live in that area, their tax will not be affected. Their homeowners' taxes will not be affected.
Mayor, councillor, that is correct, and I go back to the finding, if you pass that resolution, you, the council, are making the finding that but for this assistance, there would not be any increase in taxable market value. If you were of the opinion that this project did not need public assistance and would be built anyways, then property owners would benefit from, right away, from increase in your tax-based taxable market value. But the facts are, in Northland, in my opinion, that but for this TIF, that this project as proposed would not be built. Again, not saying nothing would get built there, but the project that you're considering this evening. So that's why I can answer that question in the affirmative, that existing property taxpayers will not be impacted by this approval. The city's tax base will benefit after the developer is repaid and the TIF district is decertified and goes away.
Thank you, Counselor Biondich. Thank you, Tammy. Any other questions or concerns or comments? John?
Thank you, mayor. I think one thing that's important to keep in mind is, you know, with tax increment finance, this district, we're not setting up a district that blankets the whole city and covers all this area. This is a specific project for the hotel. That's the project area, and that's where it's not encompassing all kinds of houses and screwing up everybody's taxes. This is a specific project for a specific period of time that we've put together. I just want to make that clear. This isn't a citywide TIF district that goose up everybody's taxes, so thank you.
Okay, thank you, John. Okay. Anything else? Any other questions or comments regarding this public hearing? Counselor Paulson.
Mayor, do we have an estimated total project cost at this time?
Tammy?
Mayor, councillors, this may have changed, but based upon what I reviewed, it was at about $20 million in total project cost. Thank you for that.
Thank you, Tammy. Okay. Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Any other questions or comments? Hearing none and no other correspondence to, for us to consider, we will close this public hearing effective 5:50 PM. We stand adjourned for the public hearing. Okay, thank you. We will now reconvene our regular city council meeting and move to item 3A on the agenda, which is adopt the resolution approving the establishment of municipal development district number six and TIF, tax increment financing district number 6.1 within the municipal development district number six, and adoption of the development program and tax increment plan related to... And we take each resolution at a time we're together, Pam. Okay, so we're looking for adoption of that particular resolution as described, discussed, and meted out by Tammy Umdal from Northland Securities. Moved by Counselor Freely, is there support? Support by Counselor Barneselli. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item 3B, adopt resolution authorizing interfund loan for advance of certain costs in connection with a tax increment financing district number six.
I'll move the resolution.
Moved by Counselor Paulson, is there support? Support by Counselor Freely, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Move to item four on the agenda, which is a public forum. Is there anybody in the audience who'd like to address the council this evening? You're welcome to come forward at this time. Seeing none, we'll move to item five, which is the consent agenda. The following items will be enacted by one motion unless a councillor or a citizen of the city of Virginia requests that the items be considered separately. Item 5.1 is the approval and corrections of the regular meeting that was held on September 28, 2021, and the September 29, 2021 special meeting. Item 5.2 is the adoption of finance resolution number 21-019, the schedule of bills. Item 5.3, approve pay estimate number 16 to Crowe-Sandersen for the UN's field redevelopment in the amount of $520,236.08. And finally, item 5.4, approve pay estimate number 16 to Crowe-Sandersen for what was formerly the MECC, is now the Iron Trail Mortars Event Center, in the amount of $1,346,075.95. These are the consenting agenda items before us today and looking for council action.
I'll move the consent agenda.
Counselor Johnson moves to approve the consent agenda, is there support?
All support, mayor.
Support by Counselor Bearboo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item six, appearances. We have no one scheduled to appear before the council this evening, so we'll move on to item seven, unfinished business. Three items under unfinished business. Item 7.1 is the 2022 budget. Do we have any other information about the budget? It's an ongoing discussion. We are going to be scheduling another budget committee meeting, hearing upon return of our finance director. Any other further information with respect to that? Does anybody else on the council have any questions or comments regarding the ongoing discusses with regards to our 2022 budget? Okay, thank you. We'll move on to item number 7.2, which is the sale of the hospital. Colleen, do we have any more information with respect to the hospital? This is Colleen from our attorney's office in the Trenti Law Firm. Please, welcome. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor and council. Mr. Lindsay asked me to convey to the council that the submissions have been presented to release the bond encumbrance. It's in process. He's hoping we're working through these last few requirements and we should be able to move forward, but we're just waiting for approval from that, and we can go forward from there.
And I think the delay, if I may, Colleen, is a result of a construction project of a helipad. Is that correct?
That's...
That it was an encumbrance on some certain requirements we had with state funding, and we're trying to resolve that, and it's been a long, arduous process, but we're close to the end. Is that correct?
That's my understanding, mayor, and I also think it was an elevator as well.
The elevator as well.
Right. Mm-hmm. Any other questions?
Thank you, Colleen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Britt. Okay. Item number 7.3, this is an ongoing discussion as well with respect to the rental code ordinance. I know that staff has presented us an ordinance that we've had an opportunity to review. We've had an opportunity to make some comments, some adjustments, some changes, request some changes, suggested some changes, and that's in the process of being developed for a presentation at a later committee, the home meeting. Is that correct, Britt? Okay, thank you. Does anybody have any questions, comments, or concerns regarding these ongoing discussions for the... for the rental code ordinance? Okay, seeing none, we'll move to Item Number 8, discussion items. We have no discussion items on the agenda, other than what we've already discussed today. And so we'll move to Item 9, committee reports. The committee, the whole meeting that was held on October 5th, 2021, and we'll turn this portion of our City Council meeting over to our City Administrator, Britt C. Bennis. Britt?
Thank you. At the October 5th Committee of the Whole Meeting, we discussed a presentation, we had a request from Mr. Troy Martenson of St. Louis County requesting a 10-minute parking sign be placed on the east side of the Government Services Building on 9th Avenue near the crosswalk. It was noted, Mr. Martenson noted that individuals were requesting a 10-minute parking in that location in order to access the drop boxes that are there for St. Louis County. It was moved and supported by the City Council to approve a 10-minute pickup and drop-off sign be placed on the east side of the St. Louis County Government Services Center on 3rd Avenue in order to allow community members to reach those drop boxes.
Looking for Council action.
Also move.
Move to approve by Counselor Paulson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Dave Scorilla from St. Louis County presented information regarding a request for installation of a new septic system in place of a currently failing septic system at the St. Louis County Land Department on Highway 135. The city in water, the water hookup is located on the opposite side of the highway, and according to city code, if you're within 200 feet of a city, right, a city utility, you have to connect. So his request that day was to request approval for St. Louis County to install a new septic system in place of the old one rather than boring under Highway 135 with no guarantee that they would actually make it to the connection because of the ledge rock that's in the area. It was moved and supported to allow that connection, to allow that septic system be replaced at County Land and Minerals Building at 7820, Highway 135, and to allow the deviation from the city code requirement to connect to the city utilities in that location due to the hardship. Action.
Thank you. Looking for Council action.
Also move, Mayor.
Counselor Bearbo moves to approve the request from St. Louis County to install a new septic system at the County Land and Minerals Building at 7820, Highway 135, not only by recommendation based on the hardship, but also by recommendation, information received from our Engineered Record SCH. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Counselor Freely?
Well, the potential for development in that area, in the Midway area, could, this could be setting a precedent of some sort for other potential developments to seek this type of variance as opposed to having to tie in, which is what the ordinance states. So that's just a concern of mine that, but if it's cost prohibitive to the point of $300,000 to a half a million to do that, then I think regardless, the precedent's going to be set and it's going to be reasonable for potential development in the area to allow that in the future. Just heads up on that.
Yeah, and I think that's a very good point, Counselor Freely, at least in Midway along the Borgan Road and beyond that. The utilities and the water and sewer service and hookups to the utilities are already there and accessible without restriction, at least in the Midway area at this point in time. So I think the concern was the potential for not being able to access that at this time, and I think this is a one-time deviant from, deviance from that ordinance process. So that's a good point, and so that's something we'll have to keep our eye on moving forward. So, thank you. Is there any further discussion? Counselor Bearbo?
If you remember back, and I don't think all of the Counselors were here at the time, the state of Minnesota was looking at moving their current site on Hoover Road up along 135 to that same side of the road as this county building is, and they found with all the ledge rock and all the other stuff, it wasn't buildable, so they pulled back as the cost was way too expensive. So it's basically all kinds of ledge rock there. So you'd have blasting and everything to get sewer and water to get across the street so, or the highway. So that's just a little information that was done a number of years ago. I think you were here, Larry, and I don't, and Carl was here, but I don't know if the rest of the Council was here at that time. So they pulled that project back.
Yeah, they selected another site as a result. So, thank you. It has been moved and supported to approve other requests by St. Louis County for the septic system reconstruction. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Ben Watkins, Project Manager for Casper Construction, requested the permission to store equipment and pipe at the wastewater treatment plant throughout the winter and to remove materials in the spring. He assured us that he would restore the area back to original once they were done. The city attorney suggested he could draft a license agreement. It was moved and supported to approve Casper's construction to store the equipment on the 20, for the 2021 Street Project Phase 2, or I'm sorry, Stage 2, at the wastewater treatment plant and to allow the city attorney to draft an agreement regarding liability issues. On your desk, you'll see a license agreement that has been drafted for the Council's review.
Thank you, Britt.
I'll move to approve.
Counselor Paulson moves to approve the Casper construction to store equipment for the 2021 Street Improvement Project at the wastewater treatment plant and to comply with the licensing agreement. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to authorize Lieutenant John Swenson, the Community Relations Officer for Virginia PD, to conduct a campaign at Alcott Park to raise awareness for the homelessness and to schedule the event with the Parks and Recreation Director.
So moved.
Moved by Counselor Johnson, is there support?
Support.
Support by Counselor Freely, but any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
At the Committee of the Whole Meeting on October 5th, we had discussion regarding the lease option for the fitness equipment for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. In your packet is that information again. It was tabled from that meeting to this meeting.
Yeah, thank you. I have some additional information I would like to share with the Council with respect to the fitness equipment. I did have a chance to speak to our city attorney, Brian Lindsay, about that, and we're speaking on another matter, and also to talk to Chad from the YMCA and to get some information from him on how this process works. So the difference between lease and the difference between purchase is basically a budgetary issue. So if the purchase is, for example, $130,000, and we don't have the money to do that, it makes it easier to spread it over the long term in order to make those lease payments. Okay? If we buy the equipment outright, we pay it ahead of time. The difference is, is that, the only difference is, is it's the budget. So if we, if we lease the equipment, if the warranty is followed based on the maintenance and the people who oversee that is, of course, going to be the YMCA. If it's a lease or a purchase, it applies in both ways. It doesn't make any difference. Beyond the warranty, when the warranty expires, the example would be in one of the Precor treadmills, if after the warranty expires, after two years, and there's so much use of that equipment that the running deck has to be replaced, whether you lease it or whether you purchase it, it is the responsibility of the owner, which is the City of Virginia, to pay for the replacement of that. Now, the maintenance person that does that is on staff with the YMCA, would do the maintenance work, but the cost associated with the parts beyond the warranty would be the responsibility of the owner, which is the City of Virginia. So hopefully that helps a little bit as we gravitate through this. And just for, on another note, once we approve, if we do, if we approve the purchase, whether it's a purchase or a lease, that it's going to take a minimum of three months to get this equipment, if not longer. So the longer we wait, obviously, the longer it takes for us to get that equipment, and the longer the supply chain issues are. And I did talk to Chad about it at the YMCA, and he ordered his equipment a long time ago, and he hopes to get it by the end of next month. So just a little bit of information as we, as we discuss this purchase or lease of the fitness equipment for the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. Counselor Paulson?
Thank you, Mayor. Couple points of clarification. Is the lease, and maybe Colleen can answer this, because I think I did have a discussion with Brian Lindsay, is the lease agreement between, it's macro lease and the YMCA?
Colleen?
It is, sorry, it appears that it's between the owner, whoever the owner is, and I believe that's going to be the city, right? If you, if you go with the lease, or I don't, you know, you guys are the ones making the decision whether to lease or to purchase, so. And in looking, I concur with what the mayor said. I've looked at both the macro and the Precor contracts, and they're form contracts, they're not willing to vary them, and so the responsibility, again, after the warranty, is to the owner, which would be the city, or the lesser, which is the city as well.
Okay, because it does say on there, it's dated August 16th, macro lease formal proposal, but that's not the actual...
I have the actual lease, if you'd like to look at it for macro. I can have that circulated for you.
And I don't, I know we're not trying to drag this out, and in all due respect, I have asked for this information for the last two months, and now it's finally before the Council. And according to the actual lease documentation of a 4.7% at $129,982.08, the original quote, I thought, was $122,000, so now it's up to, up seven more thousand, so I'm not understanding that. But at 4.7% over five years, the city would be paying $15,553.08 in interest, where we had budgeted in our Iron Trail Motors Event Center budget, $75,000 for fitness equipment. So I'm curious why we, as a city, would want to stretch those payments and add an additional, it is a budgetary concern, I mean, it is a budgetary thing, Mayor, I would agree, but we're adding on $15,553.08 by entering into this lease agreement, and I don't know if that's prudent or not. And had we had this information, you know, two months ago, this, this equipment would have been ordered two months ago. So, you know, I do know we're, we need to hurry, you know, the time is of the essence, but I think we also need to do our due diligence, and it's hard to do that without the documentation put before the Council. Thank you.
Mayor, I do have the form contract for the financing for macro. Do you want me to present that to his?
Yeah, please do. I had the, I had, I had the ability to see that in its entirety. So as Counselor Paulson is looking through this macro lease agreement, the question is, comes for us, do we lease or do we buy? And the, and the issue is, is do we have the $130,000 upfront to buy, buy the equipment, or is it a little easier on the budget to lease it over time? And just as a point of note, that the YMCA leases all their equipment.
Yeah, and the, and the macro agreement is, it's essentially a financing agreement through Precor, so...
Right.
We're responsible, the city's responsible either way.
Right, and what, we're paying the YMCA, which approved that, to operate the facility for X amount of dollars. In addition to that, they have somebody on staff locally that maintains the equipment. Anything beyond the warranty that needs maintenance will be maintained. In the event that a part needs to be replaced, then that would be the responsibility of the city, the owner, to buy that piece of equipment for that maintenance person within the construct of agreement with the YMCA to, to repair it.
And to the extent the Council's concerned, the maintenance of equipment is Section 801, and this contract is very, the print is very tiny, but essentially, it reaffirms with the mayor, saying that that, basically, as for the financing piece, the owner is the maintenance person, and then on the Precor contract, I think it's on page three, where they talk about the warranties, and I think you have that in your packet, and then the responsibilities beyond that and need for notification.
So, Mayor, if I may?
Please do, Counselor Paulson.
Yeah, this writing is really tiny.
It's tiny.
And it's marked sample, so there's no, there's no name entities on here.
Right.
We don't actually have the physical contract in front of us that the city would be engaging in or entering in, I mean.
What Mr. Lindsay was able to gather from talking to the, both the Precor folks and the folks from macro was that they follow these form contracts, they don't vary them.
Right.
Yeah.
And I mean, they didn't, they didn't give us, they didn't, a contract wasn't procured for us to be able to review, to adopt into a resolution in our, I mean, this is just a, it's a sample.
Sample.
No, it's not City of Virginia, because that was part of my question. It's, it's sold to, one, one of those things was saying it was sold to the YMCA, one was saying it was sold to the Iron Trail Motors Event Center. So I think we need, that needs to be clear.
Okay.
Who the ownership is.
Sure.
And I, I just, I'm, I'm having a hard time understanding why it's so hard to get a contract together. I mean, I'm not, this isn't about you at all.
Right, right, no, I understand.
This has been the request that I've, we've been asking for a very long time, and if this is their standard contract, why can't they type it up with the owner and all of the information so that when we enter it into our packet record, we know what we're voting on?
Sure, I understand.
I think that would be my, and I, and I wouldn't, I would not move forward until we have those legal pieces of paperwork in our, in our packet to actually vote on. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Counselor Johnson?
Thank you. The other concern I would have as at this point is that the quote expired 9/2 of '21. So I think that we, I have to agree with Counselor Paulson that at this point, we would, I would think we would need to get an updated quote to make sure those numbers are still accurate from Precor. And I know this is way late to the game, but why didn't we just stick to the $75,000 budget? Like, we're asking for everything we want, but maybe we need to not want so much. So, and I think that leaving this on the table until the next committee meeting is to get, make sure that the quotes are still valid. I mean, as we just had five presentations saying stuff coming in that we quoted earlier is no longer valid, I would not be comfortable moving forward until we had another quote that was, that gave us the month or two to have the exact numbers correct in writing from them and not just a verbal, yeah, don't worry about it. I want to see those in writing.
Yeah, thank you, Counselor Johnson. Counselor Biondich?
Thank you, and I would be in agreement with that also. Does it list on here how long the warranty is on the equipment that has moving parts?
Well, it depends what type of equipment it is.
I think on page three of the Precor equipment, which is the same whether it's purchase or leasing, Counselor, it lists for that, each item and what particular piece of the item.
But I, I'm not comfortable moving forward on this yet either.
Okay, so we have a resolution in our packet, we discussed it, so I'm looking for, we have to take some action one way or the other, I think. So whatever it is, looking for a motion. Counselor Freely?
You know, we do have to, I have i's dotted and t's crossed, there's no question about that. My biggest concern right now is that we have a $38 million building that's essentially completed for utilization, and we have youth that are in that building utilizing it from 3:00 in the afternoon till 10:00 p.m., seven days a week. And those are the people that we promised this equipment to. And so I don't know how much longer we can hold this process up, although it's being held up for legitimate reasons when we haven't gotten the documentation secured with the, with, like I said, you know, i's dotted and a t's crossed. So it's unfortunate, though, that we're at this kind of impasse, so to speak, with regard to the specifications. We did get a fairly good pricing because of the pricing that's allowed by Precor to a nonprofit organization like the YMCA, who has already completed their transaction, my understanding.
They have.
So it's unfortunately that we have... So it's unfortunately that we haven't been able to do the same thing that the YMCA was able to do. And I have some concerns, too, that if we budgeted $75,000 and now we're looking at $122,000 to $129,000, that's a concern. I would ask, though, and I don't think anybody has that information tonight, that there is contingency funds still that we have available to us through the project budget. And it would be nice to know those answers as well. So I guess I'm, I'm struggling, too, with whether or not we should move forward with this. But unless and until we have a contract solidified for us and other information provided to us with regard to monies that are available to be able to cover the costs that are exceeding the amount that we're going to have to pay. But point being, we're way behind the eight ball here on providing what we promised to the youth in this community that are currently utilizing that facility in its full capacity in the season that they're in. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Well, I would like to make a couple comments, if I may. I think that we'll have to make a decision whether it's going to lease or buy. And from my perspective, we, we're spending an over $20,000 a year to have the YMCA operate this facility. And so we're talking about $75,000 as opposed to $130,000, and maybe we should cut that down and stay within the $75,000 budget and forget about everything else. Well, you know, are we going to compromise, from my perspective, the, the need to provide the equipment that's going to be necessary in order to do that? So if, if we just, if we cut our, the equipment in half, why would we have the YMCA running the thing? So, you know, I mean, you either do it right, or you don't do it at all. And so I'm not concerned personally about, from a $75,000 to $129,000 or whatever it is. That's why lease, you pay that over time, helps spread that out so we can provide what's necessary and what the, the community wanted moving forward with that. So, but if we're going to buy it, then you buy it outright, find the contingency funds or whatever funds wish to do that. But the decision we have to make is, is whether we're going to buy the equipment or not, or we're going to lease the equipment. And so now, we're, we don't have enough votes, obviously, based on the comments, because it takes five to two to spend money. And we've had four councils who are, 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 three for sure, that indicated, you know, they were not going to move forward. So we have to now go back to the drawing board. So I'm looking for some council action about what the next step is, whether we table this until we get a contract and the, and the, and the information that has, instead of sample on, it has the Virginia thing, a logo on, it has all those kind of things, and the, and what the difference of the equipment is. So we'll have to decide if it's $129,000 or if it's $75,000. We also have to decide whether we're going to purchase or lease. So I'm looking for some council action moving forward. Councilor Paulson?
Mayor, I will move to put this on the next committee of the whole agenda as a line item for discussion.
Okay, moved by Councilor Paulson. Is there support?
Support.
Speaker, Councilor Biondich, is there any further discussion? Councilor Bearbo?
We have to remember one thing in this whole discussion. I don't want to see the project dollars for this equipment cut back for number one reason. They met with stakeholders that are going to be using this equipment, and this is the type of equipment they wanted to have in there for the functionality of the weightlifting programs, et cetera, for all the programs that we have in that facility. So I don't want to delay it, and I'll go along with waiting till our next committee meeting. But that's another thing, taking into consideration and lead time on everything with the, with the supply chains now are nuts. Take a look at anything, they're getting, they just had a big article on the news this morning about lead times and stuff. If you know that you can't get them for a long time, get them now, because price is going to keep going up. Stuff has gone way up already, anywhere from seven to 20% right now, already on products that are around the country. So we need to get this accomplished fairly quickly.
Okay, thank you. It has been moved and supported, moved this, I said, item off for the next committee of the whole meeting. And hopefully by that time, we'll have the contract ready to go that's in this informants is acceptable to the council, so we can find out, then we can make that decision moving forward. But then it would be for formal approval at the following council meeting. So it has been moved and supported. And is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the, it was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the quote from Tackala Farms for biosoluble disposal from our wastewater treatment site.
So moved. Moved by Council.
Support.
Moved by Councilor Freely, supported by Councilor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution for the lease agreement with Quadrant for a new postage meter for City Hall for 63 months.
Moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support? Support by Councilor Bearbo? Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to adopt the resolution for change order number one for the 2021 street improvement project for a decrease in the project amount of $11,420.20.
Moved by Councilor Freely, supported by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was tabled at the committee of the whole meeting, the agreement with St. Louis County for the use of Iron Trail Motors Event Center for COVID-19 testing and vaccinations. I do believe in your packet, there is an updated license agreement for your review today.
And I think Brian gave us a pretty clear understanding and on the protocols moving forward. So thank you, Councilor Paulson.
Thank you, Mayor. I've read the contract, and I feel comfortable the way it's written. I do have one question, maybe for our attorney, and that is, why is this a license agreement and should it be a lease agreement? Or when I talked to our city clerk, license, lease, and MOUs, we've, we've done all of the above. Could you maybe just give me a little bit of an understanding of why this is a license agreement? Absolutely, yep. And then would it be kind of your recommendation as we move forward into these types of situations, that we continue on a lease, a license-based path on the situation? Perfect. Thank you so much for that explanation. Really appreciate it. Thank you.
Councilor Freely?
Oh.
Are you looking for council action with respect to this license agreement with St. Louis County for the use of the Iron Trail Motors Event Center for COVID-19 testing and vaccinations?
I would move the updated license agreement.
Councilor Freely moves to approve the updated licensing agreement. Is there support? Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Johnson. Further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
At the, the whole next item on the agenda was the review of the job description and stipend for the figure skating coaches.
Thank you. And the purpose of this, obviously, in the course of that meeting, was instead of having, conducting skating programs for six months, it's going to be an all-year-round program. And there was a request by the skating coaches to up that stipend $2,500 for, for the whole year, with an additional $1,500 in assistance for the, to do the skating show. So it was moved and supported at that committee level to approve the job descriptions, increase in stipend for the skating coaches. Looking for council action?
Having sat in on that meeting, I would move to approve the, the descriptions and the increase in stipend that was presented to us by the coaches.
Thank you. It's been moved by Councilor Freely. Is there support? Support by Councilor Biondich. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We have received notice of upcoming retirement in our police department. Thus, it was time to look at the job description. It was moved and supported to approve the updated job description for the confidential administrative assistant position in the police department, to change to an administrative assistant to in AFSMI, and to allow staff in the union to negotiate, to review the wage.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion?
Just a clarification, Mayor. So once the union and the staff, once we receive from the union what they think of comparable wage, maybe we'll bring it back to the council for final approval before we go out for posting.
So, yes, so we're going to approve.
Well, this isn't done yet. We're still working.
That we're approving the, the position and allowing staff to review the wage and negotiate with the union, and you'll come back for the final approval.
Correct.
Thank you. That's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We had a request from our library director for approval to close the library for in-service days on November 12th, 2021, and half a day on December 17th, 2021. And Jody, did I get that right? Was that, that was correct? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Biondich. Is there support?
All support, Mayor.
Support by Councilor Bearbo. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution adopting and the hire of recreation assistant positions for the City of Virginia. And the four recreation assistants are Bobby Joe Hendricks, Anthony Block, Alex Visonette, and Ray Ann Zupitz.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
It was moved and supported to approve the resolution adopting and the hire of recreation assistant positions for the City of Virginia. And the four recreation assistants are Bobby Joe Hendricks, Anthony Block, Alex Visonette, and Ray Ann Zupitz.
So moved.
Moved to approve by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We have received notice of upcoming retirement in our police department. Thus, it was time to look at the job description. It was moved and supported to approve the updated job description for the confidential administrative assistant position in the police department, to change to an administrative assistant to in AFSMI, and to allow staff in the union to negotiate, to review the wage.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion?
Just a clarification, Mayor. So once the union and the staff, once we receive from the union what they think of comparable wage, maybe we'll bring it back to the council for final approval before we go out for posting.
So, yes, so we're going to approve.
Well, this isn't done yet. We're still working.
That we're approving the, the position and allowing staff to review the wage and negotiate with the union, and you'll come back for the final approval.
Correct.
Thank you. That's been moved and supported. Is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
We have received notice of upcoming retirement in our police department. Thus, it was time to look at the job description. It was moved and supported to approve the updated job description for the confidential administrative assistant position in the police department, to change to an administrative assistant to in AFSMI, and to allow staff in the union to negotiate, to review the wage.
So moved.
Moved by Councilor Johnson. Is there support?
Support.
Support by Councilor Paulson. Is there any further discussion?
Just a clarification, Mayor. So once the union and the staff, once we receive from the union what they think of comparable wage, maybe we'll bring it back to the council